This is green lights on. How we doing now?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission meeting for today's Monday 8/28/23. Our meeting is in person and live on MCTV, channel 27. It's held in person in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act to maximize transparency and public access. Members of the public may also attend in person in the Millbrae Council Chamber here or teleconference by Zoom or by phone. Meeting ID and dial-in number are on the Millbrae website. Persons are members of the public are encouraged to provide comments and any in-person speakers will be called first followed by virtual attendees. Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please? Bernadette?
Commissioner Chan?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have an agenda review. Roscoe? Oh, let's, before we do that, let's go with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Roscoe, if you have somebody that can lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic, which is our nation, our God, our freedom, our justice, our home.
Okay, and now, Roscoe, if you can over the agenda?
I believe this is the point where the chair, if there's any changes to the agenda, and there are changes to the agenda.
Okay, no changes. Being that, we move on to the approval of the meeting minutes for July 17. This is for the commissioners. Are there any comments, edits, corrections on the July 17, 2023 minutes?
Who've approved the July 17 minutes?
Second.
Okay, if we could have a roll call, a call for that?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, great, moving right along, we have Section 3 for Public Communications. If there's any persons in the room wishing to comment on any items not appearing on today's agenda, we have Public Communications limited to more than three minutes per speaker. And if there's nobody in the room wishing to speak, are there anybody online?
There are no speaker slips and there are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, given that...
Chair?
Yes.
Before we move onto public hearings, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the newest member for our Planning Division team, Angelica Gonzalez. Angelica comes to us from the East Coast, from Maryland. She's coming back, she grew up, worked for the city of Alameda, and is coming back to relocate, to be closer to her family. So we're really excited to have her. She's going to be working on a lot of important initiatives, including the city's objective residential design standards and working on the grant that we received from MTC to amend the MSASP to develop a framework for a multimodal integrated transit station. So I'd like to introduce Angelica.
Hello, can you hear me? Good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to mention that I'm really excited to be part of this Planning Division with the Community Development Department. I started two and a half weeks ago, but as Roscoe mentioned, I have a lot of experience as a planner with the city of Alameda and bring a lot of experience from the East Coast, from Northern Virginia and also in Maryland. I look forward to working with you all.
Welcome, Angelica. Glad to have you onboard. We know that Washington DC is, I think it's modeled after Paris, so welcome that classical design experience and thought into our city. So, and in Public Communications, we can go to item number four on the agenda for public First item up is 166 North Rollins Road. Public hearing to consider design review permit, a conditional use permit, and amendment to the Millbrae Station area-specific plan to, one, allow biotech scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly, tech biotech component manufacturing, including hazardous uses classified as biosafety level 2 with a conditional use permit in the transit-oriented development zone portions located north of the Paseo connecting the Millbrae Transit Station and Rollins Road, as shown in Figure 4-5 of the Millbrae Station area-specific plan, south of the Bart parking garage, east of Millbrae Transit Station, west of Rollins Road, and within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environs of the San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zones 2. Before we get started, Ross Nestor is willing, ready to go. Do we have any commissioners have anything to disclose, discussions with the developer or public regarding this matter? Okay.
Thank you. So I do live within 1,000 feet of the property, so I did consult with planning staff to look at the FPPC guidelines regarding conflict of interest over this item. And based on my reading of the guidelines, I do feel I need to acknowledge that the guidelines could reasonably apply to my circumstances, so I do feel it's necessary out of abundance of caution to recuse myself from this proceeding.
And Nathan, I guess the typical procedure is you can join us later after this session is over, or you can be excused if you do want to stand by, you can stay in the back room in the waiting area, and then you can be called back, or you can be excused.
Since it seems like this is the only big item on the agenda, I'll probably just, if I have the option, I would like to prefer to be excused.
Okay, Nathan, you can be excused. Before we start with that, if you can wait a minute, Nathan, also, I also should disclose that I've had before time with the Planning Commission, I did have certain lobbying interaction with the developer, Republic Urban, on the TOD project. And so, under the previous review sessions, under advisement of City Council, I had previously recused myself from review, design review, and approval of any projects under the TOD Gateway Project. So in that sense, also, I feel it's the same situation that I would be, recuse myself from this review also. I know that we have some discussion with the city, and so Roscoe, if you could advise on the matter?
Yeah, I'd like to call Gabrielle Jansons, who is the city's counsel on this issue, on this matter.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Gabrielle Jansons. I am a partner at Gold Farben Lippmann, and we are providing legal support for this project for the city. So as I understand, there's currently a vacancy on the Planning Commission, so there's only four commissioners. If two commissioners recuse themselves, that leaves the commission with only two members, which is not sufficient for a quorum to conduct business. That puts us in the position of having to invoke the rule of necessity, which is a common law procedure where we will request one of the conflicted commissioners to participate in the proceedings this evening so that there is a quorum and business can be conducted. The way we will do this is by a random selection between the two of you. One of you will randomly be selected to participate this evening. And if I could turn it back to Roscoe at this point to talk through how that will be conducted.
So the way that we'll conduct the random draw is I'll have Carmen write the names of both commissioners who have recused themselves on a piece of paper and put them in a bag, which I will then draw. So the name that I will draw will be the commissioner that will preside over this item this evening.
Okay, so then, out of the two potential candidates to recuse themselves, then I will accuse...
You may be excused, yes.
In that case, I'll likely submit comments to the city separately. And at this point, I'd like to request Catherine, if you can begin facilitating this meeting. Okay, so, great, I'm glad one of us is able to at least review and move forward with what our decisions are. And then, I know Nathan will have good insight and judgment, so thank you. Okay, Catherine? Oh, and so, I'd like to excuse myself from the meeting at this point, too. Okay, thank you. I'll catch you guys on Zoom. Also, I'll say these. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. With all that's happened here, we're gonna move...
Is your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Your microphone?
It is. You know, there is a different button here that I didn't have before, public. What's that one? It's just... Okay, okay, I just...
Closer to you?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the design review permit and conditional use permit, which has already been read. I don't think I need to redo it again. That being said, may we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Is it? Go on. I'm Nestor Guevara, associate planner here with the city of Millbrae, and I'll be presenting the item 4A for you tonight, the MSASP amendment, conditional use permit, and design review permit at 166 Rollins. So as mentioned, the action before you tonight is to hold a public hearing to consider a designer review permit, conditional use permit, and an amendment to the MSASP to allow life sciences uses in the transit-oriented development zone, the TOD zone of the MSASP portions specifically located north of the Paseo connecting the Millbrae Transit Station and Rollins Road, as shown on Figure 4-5 of the MSASP, south of the Bart parking garage, east of the Millbrae Transit Station, and west of Rollin Roads, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environs of San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zone 2. And two, to clarify that industrial uses are permitted in the public facility zone district of the MSASP. Just to give a little bit of quick background, the MSASP was originally adopted back in 1998. There was a major update done in 2016. This is a plan that basically guides development and improvements within the area adjacent and abutting the Millbrae Transit Station. As you see here on the map on the right on your screen, this is the area for the MSASP, the plan area, and it is within the, what is defined as a planning area in the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for San Francisco International Airport, which includes its own land use regulations and safety compatibility zones, of which the item before you tonight is in zone number two. So the city council has adopted previous MSASP amendments and overrides. The amendments have been to conditionally permit biosafety level 2 uses and life science uses in the TOD zone. There's also been overrides to permit hazardous uses up to biosafety level 2 in the TOD zone only south of Millbrae Avenue and just west of the Millbrae Station, as well as in the Employment Center land industrial zone, which is just south of the TOD zone. And this map here on the right shows those locations for the previous overrides that you've seen before in the red hash-marked box there. This graphic here on the right just kind of illustrates what the biosafety level kind of means in terms of different examples of diseases. So basically, the least, lowest-risk microbes are those found in biosafety level 1, goes up to 2, 3, and 4. The item before you tonight is concerning biosafety level 2, which includes things that are decently common in the community, such as influenza, the flu, salmonella, and those types of microbes. The item before you tonight specifically on the amendment is to allow these hazardous uses up to biosafety level 2 in that TOD zone, as shown on the map here. So it's just south of the Bart parking structure and just east of the Millbrae Bart and Caltrain Station, within, again, that AOUCP Safety Compatibility Zone 2. So the text amendment includes a, or the MSASP amendment includes a text amendment or in addition to the text on page 4.2, page 4.2 of the MSASP, to clarify that industrial and office uses are permitted within the public facility zone. In addition to the text regarding the transit-oriented development zone on page 5.2, to include that amendment area that we're discussing tonight, as well as, again, clarifying that the industrial and office uses are permitted in the public facility zone. Page 5.7 also includes an addition of text, number one, to refer to the specific resolution that would allow this, and number two, a note 6, it would include that language for the MSASP amendment area that is being discussed tonight. The project tonight also includes a designer review permit and a conditional use permit. This is for 166 North Rollins Road. This is the existing office building for the gateway development. So it includes just under 160,000 square feet of office space, as well as three levels of parking garage and ground floor commercial space. Our staff notes that since it has been opened, the building has remained vacant, and thus the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow the life science uses up to, again, biosafety level 2, as well as a design review permit for exterior and minor interior modifications to the building due to the use for life sciences. As part of the conditional use permit per city code, these two findings must be made that you're seeing on your screen. They're included in your packet in Attachment Number 2, and staff details that these, staff notes and details in Attachment Number 2, that these findings can be made for recommendation of approval of the conditional use permit. Staff would like to note that the conditional use permit biosafety level uses and life science uses are mostly in the upper stories of the building itself, not so much in that ground level that has more commercial space. There is a modification to that first floor to include, basically, back-of-house uses ancillary to the life science use in what is currently a commercial space. It's about 1,600 square feet that would be converted to ancillary to life science use. And this here is the, that proposed first-story floor plan. This would be the floor plan for the upper stories, so they would basically include both office space, but then also laboratory space as well. In terms of the exterior modifications to the building, this is getting more into the designer review permit of it. There are existing windows on the north facade of the building that are being proposed to be changed to louver walls, a louver wall system that would support the life science use. So this image here just shows the building as it is today, and on the next slide, we can see the proposed elevation of what it would look like with the louver system instead of the windows, more towards the center of this elevation drawing here. As mentioned earlier, there are slight modifications to that first-story commercial space, and with that come exterior modifications as well. So that exterior, or existing ground floor space, ground floor commercial space that has storefront on the east side of the building would be replaced with a louver wall as well, and stucco that would match the existing finish of the existing building. And this, again, is the elevation for that side of the building that shows that first-story kind of corner louver system that would replace the storefront that's currently there. Just like with the conditional use permit findings, findings need to be made for a designer review permit to be approved or recommended for approval. These are the findings here, the four findings per our city code, and staff, again, finds that these findings can be made, as is detailed in Attachment 2 of your packet. In terms of the environmental review for the project, the city is the lead agency under CECL, the California Environmental Quality Act, for this project, and an addendum has been prepared to the MSASP final EIR, the Final Environmental Impact Report. This addendum is found as Attachment 3 in your packet, and it concludes that the proposed use would not have any additional significant or unavoidable environmental impacts other than those specified in that original final EIR from 2016. In terms of the process, we're just at step one here. The Planning Commission, you would be reviewing the MSASP amendment tonight, and if you vote so, recommend to the city council approval of these amendments. The next two steps would be review by the Airport Land Use Commission and the Airport Land Use Committee over the subsequent months. They would review the project and the amendments for consistency with their AOUCP for SFO. Steps four and five are then bringing the project to the city council, firstly, to consider adopting a resolution, making the draft findings for the project, and declaring an intent to override the AOUC's inconsistency determination and providing notice to the necessary reviewing agencies. The final step in the process would be a final public hearing with the city council, where they would consider adopting, one, the resolution overriding the AOUC's inconsistency determination, and, number two, a resolution adopting a text amendment to the MSASP, as well as approving both the conditional use permit and the designer review permit. And with that said, the action for tonight is to hold the public hearing, to consider recommending approval to the city council on the following. Number one, an amendment to the Millbrae Station area-specific plan to allow biotechnology scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly, and tech biotech component manufacturing, including hazardous uses classified as biosafety level 2, with a conditional use permit in the transit-oriented development zone portions located north of the Paseo connecting the Millbrae Station and Rollins Road, as shown on Figure 4-5 of the Millbrae Station area-specific plan, south of the Bart parking garage, east of Millbrae Transit Station, and west of Rollin Roads, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environs of San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zone 2, and to clarify that industrial uses are permitted in the public facility zoning district, as well as to recommend approval for the designer review permit and conditional use permit to allow biosafety level 2 uses at 166 North Rollins Road. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions. The applicant is here in person, and our secret consultant has joined via Zoom as well.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? No.
So Nestor, do you mind restarting the slide presentation and going to, like, the diagram of the Rollins Road intersection and the new louver wall?
Right, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on there correctly, because that, it was my biggest question.
So you're asking just to clarify the location of the louver wall?
Well...
Where the windows were currently, or currently are.
No, the, uh, okay, well, let's, so actually, the first question I had, earlier slide in this, with respect to the industrial and office for the public facility zone, so those are, that's... are, that's, that's still for the use of the city, right? Or we talked?
Exactly, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that wouldn't change anything in terms of any buildings or uses.
Sure.
It would remain, just to clarify.
All right, great. So then, yeah, then my next question was about the, yeah, that intersection of Rollins and East Station Road, if we could go to that slide, both the overhead as well as the ground floor one.
So maybe this, would this one be one of them?
No, 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 it's still further ahead. It's, it was in the design review portion of the packet.
Oh, right.
Right here, okay.
Oh, that one, all right.
So, yes, this one, okay. So if I'm, so one of the questions I had was about how the loading area would work. So in this diagram, it seems like the intention is that the loading trucks would pull up into this, I don't know how you, what the technical term is, the cutout of the road alongside the sidewalk, right?
Kind of the curb cut?
Yeah, sorry, the curb cut, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it'd pull up parallel to the, to the building, it seems, at least in this diagram. And if this is the question for the applicant?
I was just gonna say, the applicant might be a better person to ask this question.
Okay, all right, then let me see what the other, oh yeah, the one other question I had about, that I thought you, the staff or the CECL consultant might be able to answer is, so in the addendum to the EIR, I did notice that there was, it did mention that it was noted that the project might impact shuttle capacity and shuttle parking areas, and the, it noted in the EIR that that was mitigated through roadway widening and the addition of additional shuttle bays. I know some council members are, often say that that was not addressed sufficiently, so do you know where the locations of the new shuttle bays are that were built as part of this project?
I can respond to that. Yeah, the, those shuttle bays were built, they are located on Rollins Road in front of Building 6A, which is 166 North Rollins Road, which is this project site, also in front of the Affordable Housing Project, the Rollins, and then there's also a duck out in front of the hotel. In addition to that, there was some additional accommodation for shuttles on Aviador, should there be enough, not enough space along Rollins, so they would go around to the east, down Aviador, and then come back down through the hotel.
Okay, and then, I think in that area, we have plans to eventually build some sort of bike facility, right, connecting from Aviador through Rollins down to Harriet Tubman Way. Can you remind me where that connection would be? Would it be via East Station Road and Rollins, or would it be behind the parking garage, or? I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't look this up beforehand, but I was just, I.
You know, don't recall offhand, I could, I could look into that and get back to you.
Okay, great. Thanks, I think that's it from me. Thank you.
I did have staff have a quick question. The changes to the building, you're showing what is there and the changes, that what is there is pretty and it's got colors, yet when you go to the louver, it's, I can't really figure out exactly what you're changing to it, the louvers going in, because it's just in like pencil rather than a real design.
I believe in your packet, it might have kind of a color example of what the louver system would look like, just an image, and I believe it would be in the, in attachment number four, which is the project plans, and I'll check what sheet it's in. It's sheet A108. It's just about the last sheet from what I'm seeing.
Okay, I just hate to see the changes, and then one other quick question. On the floors where it shows office space, that is basically office space only for the life sciences, only for the life sciences section, or would those be just office spaces?
So it would, this amendment would allow life science uses, but they could still propose and have a general office as well.
So those other three floors that show?
They can be, they can be a general office as well. It doesn't have to be specifically life science, but this amendment would allow that use.
The whole thing could be, the whole three and four or something like that.
The upper stories, that's correct.
Okay, I hate, the building is just so attractive right now, but I'm sorry to see it change, but, okay, thank you. Any other questions? No. Okay, is the applicant available to make a presentation? I think staff has done a great job, but.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Melissa Durkin. I am Senior Vice President of Development with Republic Urban Properties. I first want to thank staff for their hard work getting us here tonight. Gateway at Millbury Station has always been about creating a community that is held together by a diverse mix of land uses all located along transit. Today, we are so excited to have delivered 400 new housing units, a new hotel, in addition to some very exciting retail tenants. Unfortunately, our beautiful 150,000 square foot office building is still vacant with not a lot of interest. We have been working very hard with some of the very best brokers in the Bay Area, but still have not managed to land a tenant. This is really the new reality of traditional office space in the post-pandemic environment. Next slide. So we've made a strategic decision to pursue level two bioscience uses at this location, really just to provide maximum flexibility for potential office tenants. We know that level two is a basic requirement for life science users, which has already been demonstrated by the numerous other developments that have achieved level two approvals within the Millbury Station Specific Plan area. Filling the office building is very important to us. It's putting people back in transit, creating this daytime population that's missing from the site, activating adjacent areas as well, and supporting local retail and restaurants. Next slide. That concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any of the other questions that you had as well.
Nathan.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thanks. Thanks so much for the presentation, and yeah, I remember attending the grand opening.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it was very nice, nice to see the project finally come to fruition. So I think what leapt out at me when I was looking over the plans, in particular, was the loading area. You know, Rollins Road is pretty narrow, it's right next to an intersection, and I initially thought that, you know, trucks would be backing up to perpendicular to the building, but it seems like from the plans, what you're proposing, at least in these plans, is that the trucks would pull up parallel to the building, and then I guess people would walk their loads across the sidewalk through, into the loading area, is that correct?
That is correct. So I actually, I was out there on my way here today. The trucks would drive in down Rollins Road, and then there's a cul-de-sac, they would make that turnaround, and you can literally just drive right in, I call it a duck out, about 95 feet long, so I think that could accommodate at least two trucks, and any coordination with shuttles, I think, you know, we could coordinate timing of deliveries and pickups.
Okay, great, that was gonna be my next question, actually.
Okay, yes.
So I'm really happy to hear that that's being addressed. So the other thing that I saw, yeah, so I have at least a couple, I have quite a couple more questions here. So one thing I saw in the EIR is there's a proposal to add diesel backup generation to the building that doesn't exist there now, and I'm curious why, you know, in this day and age where we want to limit NOx emissions, we want to limit CO2 emissions, you're proposing a diesel generator rather than like solar plus a lithium ion battery setup, what, did you consider that at all for the site, or is it something you'd be open to considering?
Yeah, so what I will say is, you know, all these plans are sort of speculative, so we really took our best guess at what the most likely scenario would be here, and the architect that we've worked with, they're sort of the, one of the experts of life science buildings in the Bay Area, and so these are recommendations based upon work that they have done previously, so that generator, that was, I believe, just something that is really just a requirement for this type of use. Whether or not there's other types, I'm not really sure, but I would imagine this is just kind of what's standard for life science.
So I noticed even in the, in the current setup, you have quite a few of the residences in the market rate building, well, mixed, mixed income building, I should say, facing directly towards the office. Now, I guess under a standard office situation, you know, people probably won't be working there all night, but I know that in life sciences, you know, you have cultures that you need to grow and organisms that you keep an eye on. If there's people not there to attend to them, they'll die, so it seems like it's more likely there'll be consistent 24/7 people in and out of the building. Is there any way that we can ensure that, you know, the people facing the building don't have to deal with office light pouring in at all hours of the day?
Yeah, so that was actually a question I had asked the architect as well, and it sounds like most of the lab work will be done during regular office hours, but you're right, I think sometimes it does require evening or weekend work. Luckily, you know, we've envisioned the lab space would actually be facing the BART garage and not the residences, that's where we have our traditional more of the office space that would support the labs. I will say, we also own the apartment building, so in the event that there were issues with light coming off the office building, we would, you know, take care of that, because obviously we want to keep our residents happy as well, but it's, it's nothing that we've really thought would be an issue, but certainly we would keep an eye out for that.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm, yeah, I understand that, but you know, a lot of, at least most offices that I've worked in, you know, one person walks in, there's an automatic light and everything turns on, so.
Sure, yes.
Just, just want to make sure that that's not, we don't have like super sensitive on-off switches that blast really bright light.
Yeah, I know, that's a really great point. Thank you.
And my final question was, I'm, you know, I'm, I understand your, and sympathize with your difficulty trying to find tenants, you know, it's been in the news a lot. What's also been in the news a lot is, you know, office to housing conversions as, you know, one way to utilize, underutilized office space and also address the housing shortage. So was that a use that you considered for this site at all?
I think maybe that idea was thrown out, but just understanding, we've already made a significant investment in office space, switching over to housing just doesn't make financial sense at this point.
Okay, and then last question is about, I know when, back in, way back when, when this project was first up for discussion, I think there were a lot of, there were a number of planning commissioners and council members who thought that the site could support more retail, given its proximity to the BART station, well, the Multimetal Station and the airport, and so, again, did you explore potentially increasing the retail square footage on the site at all?
No, I will say, I think what's most important to retailers is they think they want ground floor, they want convenient parking, so we have, you know, ground floor retail, but then having to maybe go up to the fourth level just probably wouldn't make sense. We still have retail space to lease at this point, so I don't think, you know, adding more would really be helpful. So we're in it for office, and like I said, this is really just about giving us the most flexibility to try to fill the building.
Okay, great, that's, that's everything that I wanted to ask, thank you so much.
Do we have any other questions? I have one more question. How can we be assured that the ground floor stays as retail?
I think you can ask the city, I mean, I think that's a requirement in our permit, right?
I know, but office space was a requirement, and, you know, they're making changes.
Yeah, I mean, I will say.
And that's okay, but.
No, we've got some very exciting retail tenants, I don't know what, you know, the word is out on the street, but I think, you know, we're aggressively still trying to fill any vacant spaces. We don't plan on converting any other retail at this point, I think we just need a little bit more time, and you'll see that it's all gonna get leased.
Yeah, I, like I say, those comments were very well taken, and I'm so glad you didn't do more retail.
Yeah, I think it ended up being the perfect amount for that location.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Vice Chair Quigg, I think what we could do is clarify, should the commission decide to move forward in the motion that the biosafety level two uses are permitted above the ground floor, except for ancillary uses, minor ancillary uses on the ground floor as needed to accommodate life science uses, and at the discretion of the Community Development Director.
So.
And that's really intended for that loading dock area on Rollins, which is associated with the life science use.
Okay. Okay, no other questions? Is there any public comment? Yeah, the open comment period. Is there anyone in the audience?
There are no speaker slips, and there are no hands on Zoom.
There being none, do we have a motion?
Move to close the public comment.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0, public comment is now closed.
Okay, with the public comment called, closed, do we have any other questions or discussion? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the two attached resolutions. Do we have to read them both, or can we just say that? Or do we have to do them separately?
There would be two motions, the first is the amendment.
Okay.
And then the second motion is the recommending.
Okay. Then I move to adopt the resolution in attachment one, which is the amendment to the MSASP.
Recommending the city council.
And recommend the city council.
Yeah, so, I can help with that.
Do we have to vote on each one?
Yes.
We could pull up the slide, last slide. So you could just reference this slide if that's.
You want me to read it? I can.
Yes, please.
Got it. Two, my motion is to approve the resolution as stated. Number one, it's an amendment to the Millbury Station Area Specific Plan to allow biotech, science. to allow biotech, science labs, tech biotech product assembly, tech biotech component manufacturing, including hazardous uses classified as biosafety Level 2, with a conditional use permit in the transit oriented development zone portions located north of the Paseo connecting the Milbury Transit Station and Rollins Road as shown in figure 45 of the MSASP. South of the BART parking garage, east of the Milbury Transit Station, and west of Rollins Road within the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for the environs of the San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zone 2. And two, clarify that industrial uses are permitted in the public facilities zoning district. And the design review permit and a conditional use permit to allow biosafety Level 2 uses at 166 North Rollins Road.
And also to clarify that the biosafety Level 2 uses are are uses above the ground floor except for minor ancillary uses as necessary as determined by the Community Development Director.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I, I, I have actually a question about the resolution. The report said industrial and office, but the resolution only says industrial, so which?
Industrial and office, thanks for the clarification.
Okay.
You need a second.
I'll second with those amendments then.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
You're doing such a good job. Do I do it again, or anybody else wanna?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion to adopt the second resolution in attachment two, which is a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Milbury that recommending that the City Council approve a design review permit and conditional use permit to allow biotechnology slash scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly, and tech biotech component manufacturing, including hazardous use classified as up to biosafety Level 2 in the Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, zone within the Milbury Station area specific plan at 166 North Rollins Road. Yeah?
I'll second that one.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
We don't know.
That's it?
That's it? Lot of verbiage here. That being said, there's a 10-day appeal process, otherwise we're ready to go.
Yeah, this is a recommendation to the City Council, so.
Yeah. But even our part needs to, ours needs to get finished before it goes on to the next phase. So that being said, we're on to new business. It says none. Do we have anything?
No new business this evening, but I do have some, an update for the commission.
Yes.
We're on staff updates, so on, on August 1st of this year, the city staff issued an RFP for objective residential design standards for multifamily, single-family duplex and triplex homes. We sent it out to several firms and also posted the RFP to the American Planning Association website and the AIA. The deadline to submit proposals in response to RFP is September 15th, so in a couple of weeks. We hope to engage with a consultant for the preparation of those design standards by the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
So that would mean that we would get started on, on this effort early next year. So we're really excited about this. As you know, the Design Review Permit findings refer to design standards, which the city had not adopted, but we will be undertaking that effort very soon here in Angelica, who we've just hired will be managing that process. So this will apply to residential properties, single-family duplex, triplex, and large multifamily as well.
Well, that's good to hear. At least we'll get moving on it.
Yep. One other update is 21 Elements, they, on occasion, hold planning commissioner trainings. There will be another one October 30th. And the time and the location is still to be determined, but I just want to give you a heads up that, that is the date that's being looked at right now. Just in case you're interested, we'll send you more information as we, as we get them.
There was another date in October as a second piece to one we did in May. But it's not set in stone, either the day or the place. Is that right?
Yeah, correct. And then, lastly, the next planning commission meeting, originally scheduled for September 4th, is canceled due to a lack of items. Coincidentally, that's, it's a holiday, but.
I was gonna say, I think it's a holiday.
We won't be rescheduling that, although the next one after that, third Monday, we are anticipating having a meeting at this point.
Okay, so that would be, what date is that about? It's gonna be about the 18th?
Yeah, 18th.
Okay. I hope we have another commissioner.
Yeah, I actually, thank you for mentioning that. Tomorrow, the staff will be hosting a planning commissioner recruitment workshop. It's at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers. So hopefully, we'll get a good turnout for people who are interested in being a planning commissioner, or we'll go over some of the rules and kind of what's, what's involved with, with that.
Yeah.
Is it 6 o'clock? Or 7?
7, I believe it's 7. Sorry, miss Spoh.
Yeah, you don't realize, when, when you miss one person and you're dealing with four, look at what happened tonight, it doesn't happen very often, but.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah.
Is it, is it only in person, or is it a hybrid meeting?
It is just in person.
Okay.
Okay, and are there any?
That's all.
Those are enough staff operates. Planning commissioner announcement. Well, the Art and Wine Festival, I think, is this weekend. I haven't seen much advertisement on it, but I might be looking at the wrong stations. It's usually a pretty big event, okay. And I think the Lions Club is doing their Friday night movies, and there's another Beets and Brew coming up, so that's it. So no other comments? That we're gonna close the planning commission for this evening, thank you all.